Getting towards the deadline. I'll be working instead of just going down in time.
Going to call a meeting to order. Please join from the flag.
This is the fire department. we need to make a couple of adjustments, we feel, before we get into the budget process. So, we're going to jump ahead to business item six point one and probably do six point two and then we'll go back to the budget stuff. Method to our madness, hopefully. So, six point one is fire department and fleet discussion.
Alright, so at the last couple of meetings, we've had some discussions about the fire department in engine four and rescue three. The big one was, do we want to get rid of those trucks? And then, do we want to also look at the idea of replacing them with a mini pumper as well? So, in preparation for this, and I'm sure the chief will have more to say, we have reached out and gotten some preliminary numbers for lease purchasing the mini pumper. I know that Mr. Henry had brought up the idea of setting $300,000 aside in capital this year towards the next truck, so.
Real quick, not to interrupt you. They're looking through their books. Do they have that? They don't have that information in their budget book, the lease pumper stuff.
Correct. We don't have that.
I just saw people going through their books and I didn't know if they were looking for it.
So, these are some from the...
That was on the capital book, right?
Yeah, and I just got this. I'm actually going to... Chief, can I get you to make five copies of something for me, the other one? I'm sorry, guys, I... There's one more. This has the terms, that's really all that they needed. Thank you. Sorry about that, guys, I wasn't... I didn't think to make it. Alright, so, yeah, so your options are, we can either put nothing aside this year, or we can put $300,000 aside this year, which was voted on the last time, or we can do the lease purchase and you have two options that we have in front of you. The one from Republic, the fire chief got, has a three, five, and seven-year term. I believe the entire cost of this is $419,000 for one. That's more of a specked out truck. And what you're going to get from Andrew Skoggan, that the... The one you're going to get from Andrew Skoggan just now was based on a $400,000 estimate, so obviously it's not right on the money. So, what would the board like to talk about first? Would you like to talk about keeping, moving those two trucks? Do we want to talk about the lease purchase, the capital? Where would you guys like to go with this?
Let's talk about looking at selling the two vehicles that we've discussed, because that might hinge on whether we purchase a mini pumper next year or two potentially. So, we've discussed, we've discussed selling a couple of vehicles in the fleet. The third ambulance, which is very rarely used, and we've had some numbers, we've all seen those numbers on the usage. And then, I don't remember what number truck...
Engine four.
Engine four. I would say that I've been led to believe that we can part for those vehicles if the price is right. If we can get enough money for them, the fire department does if we need those vehicles. But, I guess, who else wants to... Scott wants to go next?
Sure. I'm sure it's no big surprise, I am not in favor of this at all. We have talked about this over the years. I guess my biggest heartbreaker at all is that the thought of dropping this town to two engine companies. I've seen numerous times in my time here that the day crew, if it comes in as a structured fire, takes two engines out of here. That additional 1,000 gallons of water has saved a number of buildings in town that are currently still lived in and on the tax rolls. My fear is that if we drop to two engine companies, that if one's out for service, it's no big... It's not uncommon today for a fire apparatus, when it's out for service, to be out of service for multiple days. Five, six, eight years ago, you could send a truck out, have it repaired, and have it back that day. Parts were available. That is by no means the case today. I maintain a sizable fleet and we run into problems. It can be down to the depth sensor unit, which is a big pain in the ass to everybody, every truck out there that has a depth sensor on it, because you just can't get on the shelf and get one. They have to assign your VIN number two-one and have it made. I've waited for trucks to get one of those, anywhere from two months to four months. And the thought, especially for, well, with the exception of one of us, that lives in Hyatt district, my house, the thought of the day crew arriving here on a fire at my house with only 1,000 gallons of water, which we have proven multiple times, has enabled us to hold that fire and again, keep that property on tax roll. I don't think you're going to do that with 1,000 gallons of water, should a truck be out of service for that day. And the same with the ambulance. I know the deputy has been in favor of getting rid of that third ambulance. Again, if something's out for service, if, yep, they will provide us a loaner. There have been times when we've asked for a loaner and that's taken substantial number of days to get here, so. I have concerns over this. And for the, let's call it $5,000, I don't believe it's that, to keep both of those units in this town in benefit of citizens of this town, I'm not in favor of it at all. There have been a number of times when the engine at the north end of town, there are five people, four people that live up at the end of town that could take that truck at night. That truck has made a difference because it fires at night. The same with the ambulance. I don't think you're going to get the money you think you might get for it. I might be proven wrong, but again, I am not in favor of that whatsoever. Those trucks, again, you're looking at three, four years, you get a replacement.
So, before I say what I have to say, engine four, is there anything wrong with that truck?
That truck does have some mechanical issues. It is over 20 years old, well, actually it's 30 years old. That truck has mechanical issues. Not currently, but it has had, I think it's a, I think it's a situation of anything that's 30, any vehicle that's 30 years old is destined for trouble.
Right, I understand that, but it's not a, it's not a truck that is gone right now and needs to be taken off the road.
Yep, no.
And if that truck goes, then we have to replace it with another one.
The plan that we're talking about right now is not replacing engine four, is completely getting rid of engine four, decommissioning it, and not replacing it. So, I think there's some confusion. The replacement truck we're talking about is engine five, which is a small one, which would be replace a mini pumper.
Is there anything wrong with engine five?
Very tired and we're trying to...
I know all our trucks are tired, but we don't have an immediate need to replace a truck because everything we have is working, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, I'm not in favor of this at all, and the reason...
I think you missed a point, Sharon.
I didn't miss any point. I'd like to finish, Henry, please. This is a selectmen's meeting and I'd like to finish.
Oh, no, this is a budget meeting, I'm sorry.
No, it is not.
Your budget, your selectmen meeting is not at six o'clock.
Henry, we're doing a couple...
Did you advertise it at six? It's five o'clock today.
The meeting is a joint meeting.
It is advertised at five o'clock.
It's a joint meeting for five o'clock and we're conducting a couple items of selectmen's business, because it's going to pertain to the budget.
When you decide to make the budget meeting, you can contact me, other than that, I'm not participating. I'm sorry.
Sharon, go ahead.
I don't support this move with the fire department, because our budget requires, it requires too many major purchases. And this is not something that I, and I've thought about this a lot, that needs to be done this year, maybe next year, but not this year. So, this is why I can't support this. I don't have the expertise that Scott does in speaking on it from that angle. But from where I'm coming from, is spending $300,000 this year on a vehicle that we don't need to buy this year. I'm not even supportive of a lease purchase payment for over $100,000 because of the number of items in this budget that need to be replaced. We have too many big-ticket items and I think those items are more important than this. And this came up at the very end and I think that it needs to be, we need to wait for this until next year. And I think when you open this meeting, you ask to take items out of order at our selectmen's meeting. And so, that's why I asked to continue speaking, because...
I don't have any problem with you.
No, I know that, and I just want everybody to know that before we actually make budget decisions, we're looking at two items, that we may be looking at taking money from the undesignated fund balance rather than putting them in the budget, which is the reason these items were moved, and that has to happen first.
Correct.
So, I want to clarify that. And I'm sorry, but I take offense to Henry's remarks and the way he's just acted, so.
So...
That's where I am with this.
I just wanted to clarify something, because we're talking about, I think we're talking about a couple of different things. There's two vehicles in the fleet that we talked about possibly selling and not replacing.
Correct.
There's a third vehicle that we're looking, the mini pumper, we can replace a third vehicle at some point.
That's correct.
Yes.
Just so we're all clear.
If you, one of my ten cents worth on it, five years ago, or whenever it was that these last rescue units come from, we were told that that rescue unit would go when the new ones got here. It never happened. No more than it got used last year, according to the numbers that we received earlier, and with all the mutual aid we got here, I mean, I just can't believe it, we can't get by without it. Do I think we're going to get a ton of money for that, to be honest with you? Probably not, but it might surprise you. I mean, did we put it on the sign or we didn't?
I posted on municipal and I think they've got another 20 days before they close, something like that, yeah.
Has there been any activity?
Yep, there's activity, they've been getting bids and stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, nothing to write home about at this point, but...
Well, I'm not sure that there is nothing to write home about, but you just, you know, as far as us having a collection of antique fire trucks up there, I don't think we need it. You got mutual aid now? Chief felt that was where we ought to go? I think we're going to go with what they think we ought to do.
So, again, to differentiate between the potentially selling the two vehicles, I don't even think that's a decision we're going to make tonight, we've already had them listed. The decision will be when those bids close.
Yes.
And if we want to sell them at that point. And that's simply a selectmen's item, not, nothing to do with the budget committee.
I think the deal with the new truck was, you told us it'd take three years to get one of them.
Yeah, thirty months, yep.
So, we talked something about putting some money, either getting some money aside or deciding where we were going with that program, is basically the discussion on that, I think.
And I think that the budget committee, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, at the last meeting voted to do $300,000.
This year.
This year.
For reserve.
For fire truck. Reserve, yeah.
So, yeah. So, go ahead.
Could I respond to something there? You had mentioned, we do have a lot of old antique fire trucks out there, and unfortunately, due to the lead time of a truck, so if we order one, let's say we were ordering May first, we're not going to see it for two and a half to three years. At that point, my thought process is the five, 10, 15, 20, 25 years down the road. The problem is, is all the apparatus out there are so old, we need to offset that at some point. So, I appreciate waiting another year, but if we keep waiting another year, we're never going to get ahead of the process and offset the age of the trucks. And what my biggest concern is, is if we have all these old trucks that we're trying to maintain, my fear is we have some sort of catastrophic failure and now we're leaning on mutual aid even more and we still have to wait two and a half to three years to get a truck. So, yes, does it need to be replaced right this moment? No, engine five will still run, will still go on calls and do its job, but at some point we need to start putting in place that plan down the road, so we have trucks of varying ages, so we don't come into a situation like we're in right now, where all the fleet is old. So, if we order that mini pumper for, say, at least we have one on the line that will get here in two and a half to three years, hopefully with the money that you hopefully choose to set aside, it will be paid for and then we can start working on the next one. But again, as we talked about last time, one of the big engines is four years old. So, at some point, we're going to have to start staggering apparatus. And the longer we wait, the more emergent the situation will be.
If we decide to order a mini pumper on May first, or whatever day we may decide to do that, how much money do we need to put down to place that order?
Zero.
Yeah.
You don't have to make a down payment.
So, and at what point do we have to make payments? When we receive the truck, we just pay for it all?
You can, or you can do the lease.
Well, I'm not, I'm, for one, not interested in a lease purchase. If we're not going to have a truck for three years, I think if we can't come up with $350,000 to $400,000 for a fire truck in three years here, we're not doing something right, so.
So...
That's my opinion. I don't want to spend an extra $60,000 or $70,000 to lease purchase, when we should be able to put that money aside, if we don't have to pay for that truck until we receive it.
From Andrew Skoggan Bank, annual payment amounts for, but the first payment is a year after the closing, so a year after taking, a year after deciding to pay for it.
What I say makes sense, that if we, if the budget committee wants to put $100,000 aside this year, or $150,000, or whatever amount, it is this year potentially, and next year, we're in the same boat and we could potentially all be sitting in the same chairs next year, knowing that we've ordered a fire truck, we're going to have to pay for this fire truck, but to save the town $60,000 or $70,000, in the long run, we need to have the money to pay for it when that truck comes in, or we're going to pay more for it over four or five years. And to me, that doesn't make sense with the amount of money we have coming into this town.
The Republic, is this lease purchase or is this outright purchase?
I think it's just options. Right? The Republic is lease purchase.
These are two lease purchase options.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sharon?
So, I agree with what you're saying, Dana, but what I'd like to add is, I would like to see the fire department, rescue department, sit down and put together a long-term plan from now, for a 10-year plan, for a replacement, where is she? I would like to see the fire department and rescue department sit down and put together a long-term plan, five to 10 years, what has to be replaced in a period of time, and budget out every year what needs to be budgeted to get the vehicles that you need. This, as far as I'm concerned, has been a rushed-up deal and I don't like making decisions by the seat of my pants, or however you want to call it. And I don't think enough planning has been put on the table to say, we have a 10-year plan, these other vehicles that need to be replaced in these particular years, and this is the amount of money that it's going to cost, and this is how much we have to set aside each year to get that. And I think before, unless that's done, I'm not willing to commit to putting any amount of money this year. I think that plan needs to be worked on this coming year, and then it needs to be discussed with the town manager and the plan. You look at our 10-year plan, there's no money anyplace in the 10-year plan to replace anything we need. And I think that that needs to be looked at and it needs to be planned out. And for the items that we've been talking about that have to be replaced for safety reasons and other reasons, there are more, more urgent things that we need to look at spending money for this year. And whatever has to be done now, we need to look at taking that money from the undesignated fund balance instead of from the budget process, so that those safety things can be, happen right now. It's not that I don't think we need those, because I know there's an aging fleet, but there's no long-term plan has been put together, and I think more time needs to be taken to put that plan together, and that has not been done.
Chief, if I could do that, could you tell me the current status of engine five?
In what regard?
Is, does it sell the pump or water take off?
It does not have a pump or water take off.
And secondly, I'm going to jump on what Sharon was going on. I agree that we need a plan, but I also agree that we need to seriously look at what impacts. I get it that mutual aid, I think we need to figure out, whether you do it as a committee or we have a meeting now and then, but I think we need to seriously think about the consequences of what we did with that, so.
I think, you're done, Scott.
Yes.
I don't want to interrupt you.
John?
The thought process, when the budget committee recommended to move the $300,000 from next year to this year, was to put that money aside so that a new engine five could be ordered. But correctly from our own capital improvement, it's approved by the selectmen, correct?
So, these last few years, we've had the fortune of being able to use the unassigned fund, the fund balance to make a lot of capital purchases. That fund balance is not going to be as plentiful as it has in the past. So, because of that, we're having to look at bringing bulk of the capital purchases directly to town meeting. So, that's why it's a little bit different of a discussion than you've seen since I've been here.
Right.
I have just have a question. So, the document that we've looked at when we were having this discussion last week, is a capital plan that goes out to 2034. So, this reads to me like a 10-year plan, but you're saying there's no 10-year plan. So, I'm just wondering what the basis was for this. It feels like there was some thought and some forward-looking and thinking that went into when this would have, equipment would have to be replaced, and there are amounts in here, you know, suggested for which years to reserve them. So, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what this document reflects.
So, Sharon can certainly correct me if I can speak on this, but I think that, yes, there's a 10-year plan that was worked on with the previous fire chief, and I think that some of the goals and objectives of the new administration may be slightly different with adjustments and so forth, and I think that even this discussion of a mini pumper is much different than the discussions we were having with the previous administration. So, I think, would you agree with that, Sharon, that that's...
Yes, and I'm not saying there's no 10-year plan, because it's there. What I'm saying is, the current administration now is changing what is right there. And I just think that you can't change a plan within a couple of meetings and say, we're not going to work on this plan that we originally put down, we're going to do this one. And to take $300,000 this year, when it wasn't in the plan, out of, from next year, and if we have all of these vehicles that have to be replaced, then maybe the new administration needs to look at how the 10-year plan is going to be done, and that's not what's reflective in the documents that we have right there.
But I would think if we had one out of the way, we'd be starting the right direction.
So...
I, I, and if you want to look at it and figure out how we go from there, I get it. But we've got a problem now, and if, if I'm mistaken, this engine five, or the one you want to replace the mini pumper, is the small four, right?
Correct.
Which doesn't have a pump on it anymore, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, it's useless to them.
Engine five is the one to replace, I mean, for not the one we're just looking to sell.
So, engine four is the one looking to be sold and not replaced. Once it's gone, it's gone. Engine five is the small four.
So, one she's keeping to get by them, correct?
Yep. You know, that we're using for transfer station runs, that we're using, like, it was very handy Thursday for storms, because we can put barricades in the background, please stay wear and tear on the bigger trucks. It's useful to them.
It's useful for other things.
Yep. So, we are still using it and that's what primarily gets used, but yeah, you know, I agree with Mr. Pick, like, there, at some point, we have to kind of bite the bullet and start replacing things.
But engine five now is more of the squad truck.
Yeah, essentially. Our utility truck kind of, I don't understand.
I mean, we don't have to go to the 300, but if we took the 100 this year.
Right.
And get the thing ordered, it's not, you're going to start somewhere.
But you just said you didn't have to pay anything this year.
Correct. You don't have to pay...
So, if we don't have to make a down payment, then why would we put the $100,000 for that down payment, when we need that $100,000 for other things?
So, I, I see both sides of that, Sharon, and I look at the 10-year plan, one second, and see $2.2 million worth of fire truck apparatus over our 10-year plan. And so, maybe the simple math is, we should be putting $220,000 aside every year. So, we don't have a year where we don't put anything aside, and then we have a year, in two years from now, that we need $750,000 all at once. That's how I would budget it.
I mean, it's not going to go away.
And then, the other thing is, they are placeholders. So, for example, the prices that you see that the town manager passed out, I've already been informed, it's a 7% increase every month. So, he said if you don't order this truck by the 26th, which gives them time to put it in their computer system, so it's actually ordered by May first, every time we wait, it's another 7%, because that's the rapid rate that apparatus is increasing. The other thing, Mr. Hunter, that you mentioned that I want to address, is I don't take operational changes minimally. I do understand that it is an operational change. Yes, I'm relying on mutual aid, but what call company and per diem department doesn't. But we have tankers on either side of us. Yes, 1,000 gallons does make a difference, but the good news about this mini pumper is it has a pump that's 1,250 gallons per minute. I know that, you know that that's a big deal. I mean, we got to start somewhere and I didn't take this lightly. I didn't think, oh, let's just cut trucks to cut trucks. Yes, I'm relying on mutual aid, but unfortunately, we don't have the call company. We did when I started. I started here. We don't have people coming from home. We do, but not minimally, minimally. We're relying on our staffing and the departments around us. So, we're not getting all those trucks out the door. I would hate to say we are, but we're not. And I don't want you to think that I'm making operational changes with a drop of a hat, because I very much care about the town and the coverage.
And forgive me if, if Chief, if that's, if, that's not what I intended to request. My, my comments were is that, the deputy head wanted to do this for several years. We've been down this road three times prior to this, and it, it, it doesn't work out. You, you, and I know in, in his paperwork, he showed that ISO, well, I know in my full-time job, we get calls weekly wanting to know, but I know when I was here, we got calls quite often going like, where's the closest fire station, where's the closest water, water source? So we still get those calls, and those still affect taxpayers' fire truck rates. So, I think decreasing the department, and honestly, as a taxpayer, as long as that truck is available to respond, for what it costs us, that little amount every year, I like that. And, and again, if, if, if we could rely on our mutual aid towns to be there, and we could guarantee that there would be two trucks phoning out of this station every time, I, I probably will, but you can't guarantee me that. And again, like, going back to, the biggest part that worries me about this is that if a truck goes out for service, we're down to two engines, we're leaving with 1,000 gallons of water for a structure fire during the day. I've just seen it happen too many times here in town, and that's been one of the benefits of having the per diem staff, is that we've been able to respond quick, respond with enough water, and get water on the fire just to save the structures. So, again, that's, that's my concern. If, if, if we can figure this out, but there have been numerous times where we've, we waited for it mutually, because we're, we're the only one in the area, as you know, other than Poland, that, that staffs, so.
South Harris has two people on, so they are getting trucks on the road quick, and their chief's right there.
Joe, you had your hand up, and I'll just go ahead and.
Two things, please Dana. First, as far as the conversation, there's, again, as was pointed out at the beginning, two different issues being discussed, to either maintain or sell off two vehicles. The other is what both parties, select board and the budget committee are interested in, which is funding new trucks. So I would respectfully request that we redirect the conversation to that issue, and then perhaps in a different select board meeting, the discussion of whether or not to sell off those other two trucks could be followed forward at that point, if that's agreeable to the select board. The reason being, it doesn't seem, it's a different issue, number one. Number two, that from what we've been led to believe, the amount of funds drawn from that sale, if it's approved by select board, is not going to be significant enough to significantly impact the rest of the discussion that's going on. So that's my first request. The question that I had is just to support Dana on his issue, that when I'm looking at the 10 years, looking at over $2 million, and one year, $750,000, another 300, another $500,000, another $500,000. When the chief mentions the cost increases on a month-over-month basis, it seems to me that even $100,000 in this year's budget is way below what we would need to do. And I would suggest that, that capital budget for the fire department Sharon alluded to needs to be reworked for the longer term, to account for not just the total amount that's in there now, to avoid any single-year hits that are not affordable, but also too, to factor in the real cost increases, the year-over-year deferrals are going to incur to the town via those purchases, if it ends up being purchased through, that's selected. So I just want to put that out there, that whatever we're talking this year is probably going to be underfunded regardless of what ultimately the select board decides to find. That's a conversation, oh, we could select it. But I just want to go into two different issues, two different conversations, and then at least the one that budget committee is involved in with funding and capital budget suggestions. It'll probably need to be more than, I figured it's going to be discussed, so.
Not too quick.
Yeah, I just have a very brief, just, and then to follow up on what Joe said, is, I mean, looking at this, I don't think it does anybody any favors to ever have a year where the amount is zero, because it just hurts you with another year. So, you know, in looking at this 10-year plan, the up and down, I don't think is doing us any favors. It needs, there needs to be something in there every year, when you know what the total amount is going to be, or that it's going to be higher.
That was my point. Now, to be fair, to be fair to the town manager, there could be other budgets that have, when there's a zero year in the fire department, there could be other budgets that have substantial capital costs in some of the other capital lines, without looking at all of them together, it's hard to tell, but it's a, it's a moving target, I think, with the costs keep going up, but I, I would concur that we need to put some money aside, and I don't think anybody up here disagrees, that we need to start putting money aside for fire department and other capital improvements. We just need to decide how much it's going to be this year, and how much it's going to be next year, and go forward, but it needs to be something. Now, so, any other things on?
When you look at it, if you put no money aside this year, you're looking at $100,000 next year, $750,000 the following year, and another $300,000, 27, 28. So, you know, you're looking at over a million dollars in three years.
Real quick, last word.
Nothing, sir.
Because we're going to come back to this when it comes time to vote the other budget, so. Real, real quick, to 6.2, the review and award recycle building structural, put my glasses on, remediation bid.
All right. In short, this is the board at select, and you guys remember taking the tour of its transfer station and seeing the, the wall on the back of the recycle building that was disconnected down at the bottom? So, we contacted an engineer who came, he designed a repair for both repairing the wall and then putting up, like, a load wall to be able to, is that saying that right? To push up against? Yeah. For those bales? So the bid for that is $43,500. So that's what you're seeing in front of you. We don't have money in the operating account for that currently. I would, so I, I see this as a two, two, two-part approach, which is why we're talking about it now. One, we wait till town meeting and raise and appropriate the, the funds then, or if the board feels that this is something that's urgent, that needs to be addressed immediately, we could turn to the fund balance policy account that we've done before, which currently has 1.1 million in it, as I put in your packets. So, I just want to make a couple of quick comments, and then I'll leave it alone. I, I do feel like the wall is definitely a safety issue for the structure of the building, so we do need to make this a priority. I also feel a great deal of caution with going too, too, dipping too much further into that fund balance amount, just because I think that we just don't want to cut ourselves short for cash flow and availability if an emergency comes up. I'm not saying this is not an emergency, I'm just saying that I, if the board chooses to fund this project this way, I mean, of course, that's, that's your decision, but I would be very cautious about looking at these other capital purchases and diving too far into this fund balance.
Is this, I'm, far through this, is this doing everything, or is this just fixing the wall? Just the wall? The 43, five is strictly the wall?
This is fixing the wall, but installing the, the load wall, right? Yeah.
Right, no, no, but I know we talked about other improvements.
Oh, this is no bathroom, no, none of that.
No, okay, all right.
Sorry. Lord, I didn't understand what you're saying.
You started talking, and I got confused, but, yeah, I mean, if it's bad, it's a safety issue, we've got to deal with it.
And five different people come and look at it, and only one bid come in, so.
Yep. And Pratt's done work for this town.
Yep, we've done the wall, the other walls inside.
So, not to put you on the spot, your recommendation was?
I think it's a safety issue, I think we should address it now.
Unbalanced.
Unbalanced.
I'll make a motion to it though.
Forward, motion. Sharon, a second. Further discussion. All those in favor? Vote. Moving on.
Thank you.
I, I'm going to defer to, I don't know who actually is your chair, if you have a chair, if somebody wants to take a moment and call Mr. Jackson, if you don't, he's a budget committee member, he's not a select board member, so I, I don't feel it's our responsibility to call him. If you want to call in, call in. We'll take a pause, if you don't, if you want to move on, we'll move on. Adam.
Okay. All right, so I guess what I envisioned for tonight is that we would start right at the top, and, because we had been, what is the term you guys use? Parking. Everything. So, do you want to start at the administrative budget? And then, if everything is, if everything is approved as written with the administrative budget, it's a total budget of $934,661, which is a $137,000 increase. And I don't know, how, how much detail do you guys want me to?
Pretty much discussing the totals.
Yep.
So, did you have updated sheets?
So I did not do updated sheets for, I've, I've updated my totals, because when we discussed it before, rather than print off 50 sheets over and over again, that's why I was reading the numbers off. I'm sorry Sharon.
So Scott has the total you just said, I do not.
Can we read the total?
So, you're, you're looking at, that's the whole town budget. He's looking at just the admin page.
Oh, okay.
So if you go to the admin tab.
I'm sorry Sharon.
There's that $1,000 added.
Yes. Uh, so total administration is 934,661.
Any discussion? Let's take a motion.
Move to approve that admin budget is presented.
I second.
All in favor? It's your turn.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 934,661.
Second.
Motion to second any discussion? All in favor? The vote? Next.
All right, I'll move on to the police department budget. Now.
Do the capital on that, or is that select board?
If, if you don't mind if we do all the operations first, it'll be easier for me with my computer.
All right.
Sorry. It's really about me, if you don't mind.
It's all about you, yeah.
All right, so for police department, the thing to remember about the police department is the police chief has requested an additional officer. So your police department total with current staffing is $1,146,746. If you add the additional officer, you've got $1,232,111. That's the difference.
Is the difference is what we're printing, right?
Yep, so the, yeah, it's $85,000 is the additional full-time officer.
So 1,000, with, without, was 1,000?
1,146.
746. And you want the number width?
Yep.
Yes.
Width is 1,232,111.
Any discussion there? Take a motion.
No pressure.
Move to approve the police budget with the one additional officer.
1,232,111. Second ed?
Second.
All approved, all in favor?
I'll make a motion to approve the police department budget with the added officer for 1,232,111.
Second.
Motion to second any discussion?
If this other officer, I mean, this has got nothing to do with the K-9 deal, correct?
Has nothing to do with it. This is for additional help on our, our, what I call crossover ship.
Saying, and if this K-9 deal comes along, there'll be another one.
No, there'll be an existing officer that we currently have.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Let's vote. Next.
Highway department. So, remember the highway department also had one additional crew member, which was the amount of 66, excuse me, 66,889. But remember that the foreman discussed, I discussed as well, we kind of collectively feel like that's something that should wait till next year, that was our feeling at the time, especially because we're looking at trying to like a mechanic and that kind of stuff. So just put that, bear that in mind. When we go to the total, without the new person, $903,086, so 903,086. With the additional employee, $980,91, so 980,091.
Questions, discussions? Take a motion.
Move to approve highway budget without additional.
Second.
Move consecutive for the 903,086. All in favor?
I'll make a motion to move it without the extra man.
Motion to second any discussion? All those in favor? Let's vote.
Fire rescue. So in here, the fire rescue for operations, we have $1,071,671, so 1071671 for a total department budget. That includes the chief's proposal at the last meeting to increase the salary line based on her studies, as well as adding 50, $5,000, excuse me, back into the vehicle maintenance line. So that is a little more than your sheets reflect, because I updated it since we spoke.
Questions? Take a motion?
All right. I move we approve the budget as presented, which would include the additional salary and the additional $5,000 in the vehicle maintenance. Second.
Move consecutive, all in favor?
Motion?
Make a motion to approve 1,71,671.
Motion to second, Mr. Hunter, discussion? All those in favor? The vote?
Public safety building. Buildings, excuse me. 72,859.
Questions? Take a motion?
And we approve the budget with the amount that Adam just stated.
Second.
Move executive, all in favor? Move executive, all in favor?
Seven two thousand, eight oh nine, eight fifty-nine.
Hey, show them.
Motion to second, discussion? All those in favor?
Recreation budget amount is one hundred and fifty-five thousand, eighty-six dollars, so one five five, zero eight six.
That still includes the summer health, right?
Yep, what that, that includes that one individual for the summer health that we talked about at the beginning. However, this moves the activities and summer rec into the capital side. Yep, so you'll see that again when we get there.
One five five, zero eight six. Make a motion?
I'll make a motion. One five five, zero eight oh eight six.
Second.
I'll make a motion that we approve the department budget, one five five, zero eight six.
Second.
Motion to second any discussion? All those in favor?
General assistance, fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars, one four, two five six.
Motion?
I second.
All in favor?
Make a motion to approve the one four, two five six.
Motion to second discussion? All those in favor? Vote.
Transfer station. Transfer station operations, we have a total of five hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine. Five three four, four eight nine.
Make a motion, we go for five, two four, four eight nine. Second.
Second in all favor?
Make a motion to approve five hundred and thirty-four thousand, forty-nine.
Second.
Motion in second discussion? All those in favor? Sorry, Sharon. Go ahead of me. Go ahead of me.
Alright, wastewater treatments. And just so you guys know, some of these are a little bit different than what you see, because I update the fuel numbers, that's why you're seeing little tweaks there, so. Sewer department, four hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two. So, four three zero, nine five two.
That includes changes in gas.
Yes.
Second in all favor?
Motion? Make a motion to approve four hundred and thirty thousand, ninety-two.
Motion in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Looking to the municipal budget? Can we approve budget minus a third party, except for?
Do you, we could do that, or, I think last year, I actually went through them like individually and then told, meaning like, you know, insurance and all that, so does that work?
Yep, that'll work.
Alright, yeah, why don't we do that, and then there's no confusion, because it can...
Alright.
So, insurance, one hundred and four thousand, seven ninety-nine, that's the liability. Do you want to do individual motions, or you want me to just?
Keep going.
Okay. And then we've got, we'll skip library and third party, you're saying? Or do you want to do library?
Do library.
Do library.
Library, forty-eight thousand and twenty-eight dollars. Shelter, animal shelter fee, six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two. Electricity, two thousand, three hundred and forty, that's for streetlights, traffic lights. Maintenance, this is streetlight maintenance and repairs, two thousand. Water, quarterly hydrants, is sixty-three thousand, one hundred. And unemployment insurance, two thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine.
And now, out of the third party request, how many have fallen within the policy of this year's request?
So, your seniors plus, Andersgård and Home Healthcare, Cancer Resource Center, Romaine, who did make an appearance here last meeting, Tri-County Mental Health, they've submitted their paperwork and financials and such. The Oxford Historical Society provided us with their information. And, yeah, so all, I believe, we could double check at the books here real quick, but I believe all of them have submitted what they're supposed to be submitting. I'd like to double check on one of them.
Yeah, I don't think, Adam, when I looked through the...
Yeah, there's, like, the bottom two.
Wasn't there a couple that didn't show?
They did not show.
There was a lot that didn't show.
Right.
They don't have to show, they're supposed to provide certain information.
But in terms of submit.
Yep. I'm going to know what happened else.
What is the status also of Tri-County Mental Health? Didn't...
Tri-County being bought out by Spurway.
Yes. I know, that's why I said that.
So, how does that impact?
Well, where, this request is from Tri-County, not from Spurway, who bought them out. That's why I...
So, does that impact how it is viewed, or are they a subsidiary of Spurway, can still provide the same services to?
Well, if they're bought out, they no longer exist. So, do we know that?
I don't know.
I don't think anybody knows what their intention is. I believe they advertised and announced that they intend on providing the services that Tri-County used to provide, but there's nothing that's going to hold them to that. They decide it's not a feasible operation, then.
So, not that I have a say, because I don't, but I will say that, you know, last year, the selectmen in the budget committee in town meeting looked at seniors plus, Andersgård and Home Health, Cancer Resource, and Tri-County. I mean, it seems consistent that we have moved on those. The Oxford Historical Society is a new request, I know that the selectmen did have some conversations with the Historical Society, and there was some encouragement for that nonprofit that's in town to put in a request. So, I just want to put that little plug in there for them.
I didn't see in the packet, I may have overlooked it, a request from Andersgård and Home Health, even though we've historically given to them, they've requested in the past, I did not see.
They did not submit anything this year, that's why it's zero, yep. Last year was five.
So, if it wasn't a request, do we need to consider?
There's no request to consider.
That's it.
Probably should have left them off, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. It's not in the list that you mentioned.
So, if we did, but seniors plus, cancer research, Tri-County, and the Historical Society, we have six thousand, correct? Am I at this correct?
The thing is, the policy limits it to two thousand, so historicals asking.
So, we have to drop that, so it'd be down to five thousand, because you can only have two thousand.
And, when I was looking at it too, you know, besides the policy things, because I'm trying to get most return on investment and cost per resident taxpayer, and when I break them out, you know, the ones that we're talking about, the seniors plus, cancer resources, minimal cost per Oxford resident, you're looking at anywhere from two cents to forty-four cents a person, not always town resident. And when you look at the volume of Oxford residents that is served, in seniors plus, it's a little over ten dollars per actual resident served, that this costs. Cancer resources, you can't figure that, because they don't provide those numbers. And then, Tri-County Mental Health, which sounds like it's off the table for the reasons of the why, it's eight dollars, ninety-two cents per serviced resident at a cost of eleven cents per Oxford resident. So, to me, those are pretty darn good return on investment for social support services that the town and state don't offer, or local residents. But, since Tri-County Mental Health, sounds like it's off the table, I would be supportive of the seniors plus, cancer resources center, and then support Oxford Historical at two
Is that a motion?
That's five, five thousand altogether, correct?
Two, three, four, five, four.
Is that a motion?
Consider a motion.
I will second that motion.
All in favor of the five thousand? Alright, now moving on.
Do you want to ask a clarifying? I'm sorry.
I didn't know if you wanted us to do that, or you're going to do the whole thing and then?
But, I'm ready.
Whatever.
Drive on.
Drive on.
I was going to ask Adam, the math is what the bottom line is, though.
If I can ask a quick clarifying question, just want to make sure I understood the motion. Seniors plus, two thousand.
Yes.
Cancer Resource Center, Romaine, one thousand.
Yes.
And then Oxford Historical Society, two thousand?
Yes.
Okay. Just make a quick note, thank you for the clarification.
That should be a thousand.
So, that should, yeah, so those?
Five.
Take twenty thousand, seven dollars off.
Alright. Yep, so that brings us to a total for that, shebang now, for the municipal services, to two hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll take a motion on the two thirty-four, three sixty-eight.
I'll make a motion on two thirty-four, three sixty-eight. Second.
All in favor?
It's the board's wishes.
Make a motion to approve two thirty-four, three sixty-eight now.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? Discussion? All those in favor?
Sorry about that, just clarifying for the minutes. Alright, so, now we have debt service. Debt service, raise and appropriate, six hundred and forty thousand, two ninety-five. So, six four, zero, two nine five.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Make a motion to approve two, six forty, two nine five.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
So, I think that gets us through the bulk of our, that's the operations, right? If I missed anything here? And so, I'm going to slide over to capital. Alright, so, I'll make sure I don't, not that I would confuse myself. Thank you, Flip. Alright, so, under general, or, under general capital items, we've got cemetery, maintenance reserve, and Thompson Lake dam reserve, so five thousand for cemeteries, ten thousand for Thompson Lake, for a total of fifteen thousand.
So, you're going to have to tell me which capital when you're on.
You're on the very first page? That has everything, is that what's going on?
Yep, I actually did mention. Here, this one's got the fresh, just the cover sheets. The second page, that is the capital cover sheet, that has the totals from all of the capital requests. Keep in mind, this, the totals that you're going to see on these capital requests includes the three hundred thousand dollars we're talking about for the truck, so. If it's easier for folks, I can just go by this sheet right here, and just start at the top, and work our way down, and do each thing individually?
Yeah.
Alright, let's do that. Thank you, Sharon. Alright, so, let's start over again. The first item at the top is the vehicle section. So, under vehicles, the first request is sixty thousand dollars for a police vehicle. We've been doing that, that is what we've been doing every year, is to...
Approve each one separately?
I think that would be nice, please.
Before we start on budget committee, historically, we've done with the select board to decide if any of these were going to come out of reserve fund, rather than the tax cycle. So, I don't know if the select board wants to tackle that first, if there's any of these items that are going to get pulled out of the annual budget, and they want to pay for them through other funds.
Do you think the advantageous thing to do, maybe the board will do the motions on this first, and then we can just, if there's anything that...
Because our, what's presented to us to vote on is going to be different if they pull things off the table throughout the term.
I think of all of what you're going to see here is, until we get to the transfer station and that repair to the wall that we just, that was awarded earlier, I think you're going to find that the rest are going to be all town meeting items. I believe.
So, I don't mind having discussion, because after the forty-three thousand, five hundred for the wall, with the transfer stations, one point one three four million left in fund balance, is there any flavor on using any of that towards any of the capital items before we put them in the budget?
Not crazy, but...
I'll entertain a motion if anybody so chooses to.
Make a motion, don't you?
Second.
Motion in the second to go forward. All those in favor? Vote.
Okay, so we're back to the police vehicle for the department, sixty thousand.
Take a motion?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Make a motion to approve the sixty thousand?
Okay.
Discussion, I just had a question for the chief. We just finished the F-150 that you had ordered, does this include just the purchase, or is it the equipment too?
We tried to factor in the equipment to make it better.
I know, it's a different price for different vehicles, so. And that's that, what you feel? Hopefully.
Yeah, try not to go too overboard, but be realistic and open to the behind of the report.
Yes. All those in favor? Let's vote.
Fire truck. I labeled this as fire truck savings, and potentially a mini pumper. And, based on last week's discussion, I... And based on last week's discussion, I put three hundred thousand dollars. For clarification, the budget committee voted on three hundred thousand dollars last year, last meeting. I don't know if there's an appetite to make any changes there, if you want to stick to that.
Does it, is it specifically for mini pumper or do we put in for truck reserves?
I'm calling it a fire truck savings or truck reserve.
I'm trying to look at the budget table, I suppose.
Alright, take a motion.
Move to approve.
All in favor of putting three hundred thousand aside for savings? Vote.
I'll make a motion for three hundred thousand.
Motion in the second discussion? All those in favor? Vote. Vote.
Now moving to capital expenditures over ten thousand. The sewer department would like a generator for the Pigeon Hill Pump Station. That's sixty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars.
What are, what are they using now?
You want to answer that?
Yes, we have kind of like portable generator, but there were some issues with it, like both mechanical but electrical issues. And it's like, A, less than convenient, B, like, there couldn't be a situation that one person cannot walk, like, really to the place, and it's not safe. And generally speaking, like originally, when the design of the sewer system was built, they, there was a provision for the generator at the Pigeon Hill. Well, I'm asking for Pigeon Hill, especially like a super important pump station because of the casino discharging into it. So casino has their own generators, so they don't care about the CMP power. All this stuff will be coming to me, something happened, I can't bring the generator, and that's what will happen, like, twenty-six will be.
Backed up.
I don't think we need to continue. We can pay this. So generally speaking, my option will be like if, really outage will be way too long, like, I can't do it, like, it's pretty much shut down the casino. Or you'll have tremendous problems with the CMT.
So you, can I just ask a question? I don't listen to budget committees. This generator you've got, so you've got it, but it doesn't work, right?
Well, it does, but we need different plugs. The weight of the plugs.
I mean, we couldn't get a new plug?
The way it was built, like, it's a seventy, seventy-five pounds, and wire itself, like, hundred pounds. And you have to change plug and wire to different pump stations because one of them is three-phase, like, four eighty volts, other one is two seventy-seven, three-phase. Other, like, all town office pump station is hundred and twenty volt, single-phase. So it's kind of like, a lot of different.
So the plug's no good? Or the generator's no good? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
No, generator is good, but you need two people to do it. And like, I'm looking for the situation that, where it's like something happened to Jeff, something happened to me. And one person cannot operate that generator.
And the new one would be deeper?
They, this one is a mobile unit, so it's one for all the pump stations. This is the one I'm asking for, is the unit which will be set right at the pump station, like, on the foundation. It will be dedicated to the Pigeon Hill pump.
It'll stay right there.
It's like a standby generator for the.
It's standby generator for the, for that, Pigeon, Pigeon Hill pump station.
And the one that's here, we get rid of?
After we will replace or standby generators on all other pump stations, we can get rid of.
So currently, just if this is clarifying, we have one standby generator that's on wheels. So we move it around to whichever pump station needs it. What he's trying to do over the next ten years is make it so that each of the pump stations has its own standby generator. That's the long-term plan. The Pigeon Hill, due to the volume that it sees, he thinks it's the first one that should be done, so.
But when we do that, do we, we put a building up for it too?
The standby generator?
Yeah.
It'll be no different than, you're correct, it's just like the one up behind here.
Will be set, like, on the foundation.
Like a generator.
It has like a tank underneath for the diesel fuel and then generator on top, and then transfer switch, automatic transfer switch. So it will be, if you can recall the Pigeon Hill pump station, where the mailboxes is, they have a little parking area and that's where the generator will go. It's will be a unit, like, it's not a mobile unit.
Like a real nice generator that some people have in their backyard.
Yeah, sixty grand, though.
Takes a little bit more power than.
Well, depends on the pump station, the prices are different, like, I think Adam has our capital plan and like, for town office, for example, which is not very important pump station, or town office, generator is going to be like, what, forty-two hundred dollars with installation?
Yeah, I'm.
It's tiny.
I'm looking right now.
It's, it's all depends on the pump station, like, how much power it needs.
This is the biggest generator.
That's the biggest, yes. Like with Oxford Plains, like, I don't have much flow, so I wouldn't be even asking anytime soon for anything. My next concern will be.
Roller rink?
Town, no, town center, the Robinson Lake, because if the redevelopment of Robinson Lake will happen, you can't tell eighty people, like, who live there, that like, guys like, you know, don't flush your toilets until the father notices. You know, and like, so that one will bring roller rink one because they're working in pair, you know? So, I mean, priority might change, but like, that's what it looks like now.
Questions? Over.
The casino's shut down, we're not getting any revenue from the casino, so this seems like a no-brainer. So I mean, that we approved sixty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for backup generator.
Checkmate, all in favor? Vote.
Motion to approve sixty-one, five fifty for the backup generator.
Motion is second discussion. All those in favor? Vote.
Transfer station, the vailler, this is for the recyclables, one hundred and seventy thousand, one eighty-four.
And it provides a new vailler?
Yep, you want to speak to that, Ed?
Yep. So it's, the one that we have there has been the original one since the town took the building over. We've already dumped almost twenty thousand dollars in it in the last two and a half years trying to keep it running. Just from last year's, this year, from, we held it over from budget last year, we, we rolled it over, going up twenty-four thousand dollars. So it's just like this seven or eight percent that she was talking about fire truck. It's in the equipment, it just keeps going up. And if the vailler goes down, all recycling is going to be done. We're going to have to pay to get rid of it.
What recycling goes through the vailler?
Cans, your cardboard, your plastic, everything, everything. It goes in the windows, all of a sudden that vailler gets vailed up, and then we send it out and sell it.
And what's our annual revenue from recycling?
I think, right now, I think almost fifty thousand, we're taking in the, the transfer station recycling and way high at the transfer station.
What's the life expectancy of the vailler?
I'm hoping twenty-five, thirty years.
How many years you get on that one?
Ah, that's thirty-two years old. That's what I'm saying, that's, it's, it was new last year, but we, we pushed it along, you know?
Thank you.
And this will have to go to dent when it comes time, we've been talking companies, that's how we got to Fidya, but maybe we can get cheaper, you know? That's what'll last far and go from there.
Take a motion again.
Move to approve the vailler.
What's that? All in favor? Vote. Motion to approve vaillor.
Discussion. All those in favor? Vote.
Alright, next item is the set of three tasers for the police department, sixteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
How old are the current tasers?
Thirteen, fourteen years. They're old, they don't even.
You stuck up the one, huh, Bob?
Pretty sure.
So you want a motion for sixteen, seven, twenty-eight? I'll make a motion for sixteen, seven, twenty-eight, and how's that going through?
Yes, that's the floor for all three.
That's the total for all three?
Yep.
So we have a motion, second. All in favor?
Motion to approve the sixteen, seven, twenty-eight.
Right.
Motion is second, discussion. All those in favor? Vote.
The next item, now, this is the front-end loader for the highway department. Now, the number that I'm looking at here is seventy-two thousand, five thirty-three, but that's based on the four-year, a four-year lease purchase. So, I don't know if we want to talk about that more before we do any approvals on that, but my thought process for being able to replace the loader, but have a, not horrible impact on the tax rate, was going with a four-year lease purchase approach. Any thoughts on that at all from anybody here?
So this is per year for four years, the seventy-two.
What's the outright purchase cost?
Let me flip to that page here. That, that should be in your book, but your CIP for highway. So loader, it's, the, this is the John Deere. There we are. So here, it looks like this sheet here. So it gives you your three options, thirty-six months, forty-eight months, or sixty months. And total payments by the time you're done paying for this bad boy, if you went with this approach, would be two hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight. And eighty-four cents.
Am I correct in, in, the net selling price, we've wrote two hundred and six?
Uh, the net price, yeah, is two hundred and sixty-six thousand.
Now, we talked in moving the old one down to the transfer station after, that was the deal.
I think that's what was discussed, yeah? Unless Ed doesn't want it.
Floyd knows my feeling on that.
Yeah, I know what you're feeling about it. I was asked what we're going to do with it.
Yeah, I think that'd be the best thing to do.
There's going to be some more budget, budget money for maintenance, then, right?
Hopefully not as much as you're doing now.
Well, I feel that he's getting rid of it for a reason. I'm going to get the maintenance.
So that would be my question is, if that one, what's the condition in comparison to the one he has now, to the one that he would get from the highway department? And I'm sure there's money in the budget for the maintenance of the one you have now, what would the maintenance be for the other one, if you take the other one?
I'm not sure what's wrong with it. Anything wrong with it?
Not by the oil, but at the point.
At the point.
I've been here four or five years and pretty much just done oil services and you'd have to have the brake pedal that it was replaced two years ago. But it's been really great. It hasn't cost a lot of money to maintain it. I mean, I, I obviously can't tell you what's going to happen tomorrow, but. It is, I mean, it's fourteen years old, it's got twelve thousand miles on it.
What do you have for miles and hours?
Mine is two thousand and two, and it's only got ten thousand some of the way.
We can evaluate that, that's a decision for another day. What we do with the two loaders, if we're going to purchase this one or not, is germane to right now.
Alright, I, I think question is, do you want to do the purchase or?
Want to do the whole thing, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. And I, I think I have to select those decisions. Think you got a lease purchase, we'll give a budget issue.
I agree with that, I think the lease purchase. That's my opinion, too.
Give it that. So I'll take a motion over seventy-two thousand, five thirty-three. Second.
Did you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, I said.
Any discussion, questions, or done? All in favor? Vote.
Motion?
Motion to approve the law of seventy-two, five thirty-three, lease purchase.
Motion is second, discussion. All those in favor? Vote.
And now we're going to capital equipment under ten thousand dollars. Back to the wastewater treatment facility, looking for a crane for four thousand dollars. This goes in the back of the truck, right?
Yeah, because the one which came was the truck already falling apart. It rusted through.
Question on fourth hour? Motion?
Move to approve.
All in favor? How big's the crane?
It's rated fifteen hundred pounds.
How much?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred?
But the, when we took screenings, which is pretty much like trash bin, was whatever we take, like, from the sewer, went to dump it at Ed's place, and the rope broke, the cable broke.
So is that all that's wrong with you, the cable?
No, not on the, the base is rusted, rusted already, and like, we tried, it wasn't correctly installed. We tried to lift like that barrel, and it started ripping the crane off the body.
It wasn't installed right?
No.
Why didn't we do something about it then?
Well, truck in the shop right now, but I didn't know how it's supposed to be, and I didn't look underneath because like, it was in the specs, like, and you know how dealers do it, like, the cheapest way possible, if you don't specify it.
Going to have the same deal with the new one?
No. No dealer. It's not a machine shop, but of course, they will be making special plate for it, to actually formo, for mounting it.
You put it on that loader, we're going to sell. Um, we're going to go with one of them. Are we ready to move on?
I don't.
They have voted.
The select board has to vote.
Yes, good.
Main motion to approve the fourth hour. All those in favor? Vote.
Alright. Next, we have transfer stations looking at a golf cart, twenty-five hundred bucks.
Can I make a motion that we consider the remaining capital expenditures under ten thousand, the golf cart for twenty-five hundred, rec stairs, two thousand, police vest, sixteen hundred, firing S airbag bottles, fifty-two fifty, fire M E S turnout kit, set for eighty-five hundred, as one group together.
All in favor? I'll second that motion. All in favor? So now we, we vote on. I'm not going to do the.
Select board needs to do it.
The golf cart, stairs, snake check, ballistic vest, airbag, turnout gear altogether.
Nineteen, eight-five-zero.
Eighteen, eight-five-zero.
You've already done the fours.
I'll take a motion of eighteen, eight-five-zero.
Second.
All in favor?
I'll make a motion for the same.
I'll second.
Motion, uh, to, you talking about lumping them together?
Yes.
Discussion. All those in favor? To vote.
All right, now we'll go to buildings and infrastructure.
Vote on the amount, if you're gonna approve.
I'm sorry.
So we've, we've motioned to lump them together. Motion by Scott, second, by Sharon.
You'll wanna approve the crane, though.
We already approved the crane.
You already approved the crane. I need to get with the program, so.
Any discussion? All those in favor? To vote.
So, and we go to Honda facilities and the project, the, uh, recycling, building wall repair, it is-
Done.
Off the table, right?
Yes. Would you like me to continue, as we've been doing one at a time?
Yes, yeah.
Yep. Uh, cemetery maintenance for five thousand, for the reserve account.
Questions, comments, motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Motion five thousand for cemetery repair.
So, yeah. All those in favor? Vote.
Thompson Lake Dam Repair Reserve, ten thousand.
Vote.
All in favor?
Make motion to approve ten thousand.
Second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Vote.
This is the thirty-five thousand dollars for the wastewater treatment plant repair reserve. This is the same one we do annually.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Make motion with thirty-five thousand for repair.
Second. All in favor? Vote.
Ten thousand dollars for the wastewater treatment plant, um, pump station repair reserve, so ten thousand.
Vote.
I'm gonna motion.
All in favor?
Make motion for ten thousand.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor? To vote. Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Um, unless there's a line here that somebody's opposed to, anybody wanna lump these together, or, I certainly, if there's a line that somebody's not in favor of, we should discuss that, we can vote on that, and then lump whatever's together, together, but I'll defer to you.
I have a question about that. I don't see anything in here for, uh, the bathroom of the transfer station.
Yep, so we have, um, so I got some numbers, Ed was able to get a number for the actual bathroom structure, you know, the, the room, um, he was able to get that, but he's not been able to get numbers for the septic and/or the, um, holding tank, right?
I do have an update on that.
You do have an number now?
Some, uh, session calling back, because we have to meet with, uh, Kingston, and we ain't allowed to put holding tank in, if you have room to put in a sort of, uh, filter bed, so you gotta do the filter bed design, and all that, he's, he's setting somewhere between eight to fourteen thousand, for the tank, cut the hole into the wall to put the pipe in, and the filter bed. But you can't come out with a complete figure until we have a design, filter bed document, do a design on the filter bed. But then, since we're not allowed to put a holding tank in, if we have room to put a filter bed in.
Yeah, and I did not have that information earlier, so sorry about that.
So you're gonna have to add fourteen more to whatever that bottom figure is, it's part of the building, and...
Shouldn't we wait till we get a number, a real number?
There's no number in here for bathroom, though.
He's got the-
So we've got, so right now, what we've got in there is we've got, um, well, well is sixteen thousand, and we had included that when we spoke the last time, and we were going to try and get, get some other numbers. And also, we had talked, which is what we just discussed, we also discussed the idea of like a rental sink, um, you know, going, going in that direction as well, so, I mean, I, um, I noted in there, you've got portable sink for a hundred and sixteen month, and, you know, for nineteen, twenty, a year, but I, we can, we can add that, add that in there, I just, again, I didn't have that number before we had this discussion, so.
Where are we at, rough idea, bathroom?
The, the building inside was fifty, fifty-five hundred?
Yep, so-
Fifty-five, sixteen, and fourteen.
Okay.
You're looking at thirty.
So, not that we haven't put off painting before, but I'd suggest that we leave the twenty-five thousand dollars there, instead of painting the building, we put that towards the bathroom, but, that's fine.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Ed, motion?
Well, let's...
We're not positive of the well, let's sixteen, if we don't go so far, you know?
Do you think you could make that a motion?
Um, sure. I'll make that a motion, we changed the line. Discussion?
Change the paint to bathroom.
Discussion. All those in favor? Vote.
Twenty-five.
So you're just changing the paint, twenty-five thousand dollars paint building, and change it to bathroom?
Understood, and that's a yes on the selection, correct?
Yep.
Correct.
So is there any other lines with any questions?
I take a motion?
I think it was Floyd and Sharon, but they're not.
What's that?
I know the motion.
You made the motion, I second it.
And then, all, all in favor?
Back to us?
Are they on that seat?
Yes, now.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to take the remaining items of the facilities, builds, and infrastructure together.
Second on that?
Just to clarify, that excludes the building wall repair of forty-three, five, and it changes paint buildings to bathroom.
Correct.
And I was second.
Right, all in favor of the-
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Does the twenty-five thousand, are you envisioning that includes the well as well? Includes the cost of the well?
No.
No? Okay.
No, the cost of the well separate.
Just wanna make sure we're all on the same page.
Septic and construction.
So, move the second in to include, uh, to take the next, all lines altogether, excluding the, the building repair, the wall repair, and all in favor of that? All in favor of whatever that figure is?
Yeah, I'm just approving.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
You're looking at a total of one twenty-eight, two forty-five for that whole budget, that whole group, other than the wall.
Correct.
One twenty-eight, two forty-five.
Sure.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. All in favor? Vote.
Motion to pick them up, isn't it?
Yes.
I'm just dead. Period.
Yep.
Okay, now we are going down to, um, this is for the highway department, road contingency, uh, a hundred thousand dollars for road repair contingency. I had noted in that discussion, um, Rabbit Valley Road, I think is, uh, one of the areas that we're going to be involved, Jim's out there now, but, uh, we're gonna need to be looking at for the drainage issues and so forth.
Is that number any realistic at all?
For Rabbit Valley Road?
No, I just, I don't, I don't wanna spend any more money, 'cause I think we're spending like drunken sales, but you, you, you're at a, uh, a hundred thousand, and I've been riding around a little bit, I see that pretty quick.
So can I. I mean, it-
I'm, I'm just asking, is it realistic?
So I have the same question you do, because after this last storm, and even before this last storm, driving on Rabbit Valley, the condition of that ditch, with all the cones that were there, anybody coming down into the Oxford end of it, I mean, they were gonna fall off into eternity, and then after the storm, I just, I think that we need to do something more seriously than a hundred thousand dollars to take to that road.
So in, in, in speaking with Jim, and looking at, um, trying to start addressing those issues, um, that's where we came up with a hundred thousand, but we need to put more, we need to put money annually away for road repairs. And we felt between the highway department's road maintenance line, and then this, that was a step in the right direction, um, while also trying to be, you know, frugal at the same time, but, um, you know, when we look at what the engineer quoted us, but that's doing the Cadillac repairs, meaning underground drainage and so forth, it was a million-dollar fix to go from the casino down to the ponds, so, um, that feels a little excessive, um, but Jim has also been addressing under this year's budget, a lot of that drainage already, um, you know, as much as he can, so.
And is this with highway crew doing the work, or contract it is?
This is the highway crew doing the work. Jim feels confident if they're not installing underground stuff, that his crew has the ability to do that. You know, the dishing in the culverts, and the cross culverts, and that kinda stuff.
This is a section that washes out every year, or about-
One of them.
Five times a year.
It was just really bad, after this last, before and after this last storm, after the last two storms.
Question, off the top of your head, do, how much money have we submitted to the feds for reimbursement? Not that there's any guarantee we're gonna get that, but...
We've had to do, for a couple of storms, I think we, we've gotta, just off the top of my head, we've gotta be getting close to a hundred thousand dollars this year for the first storm and the second, I mean, it's seventy-five to two hundred, somewhere in there.
Not as much as I thought.
Yeah, that almost seems like a, uh, but-
Uh, please don't quote me on that, I mean, I can go double check, but we've been submitting for the, to FEMA for the, for those two. I, I think a hundred thousand dollars, I agree with you, Sharon, is a little on, on the light side, I don't think it would hurt us to put a quarter of a million dollars in there for road repairs, I mean, two hundred and fifty thousand, um, I, I don't think that would be an unwise decision, but I also am looking at, I'm also looking at the total of what we're discussing, not to pick on Floyd and his comment just now, what we're spending, but everything we've just talked about, we're talking about nine hundred thousand dollars, so I, that's if, if we move forward with, that's if we move forward with, um, this hundred thousand dollars for the road, so... That's all.
I think it's up to you folks to come up with a number that you think is, not to put you on the spot, but you either wanna approve that number, you wanna change the number, or...
Hey, we've got that, yeah, I'm fine with the number, Jim came up with that, working with Adam, it's he, he and his crew, it's gonna be doing that work.
Right.
He knows better than me, so I'll move to approve the road contingency at a hundred thousand.
All in favor?
Vote. Sorry, gotta add myself.
You have a mind to go follow you, folks.
It's getting late. So, I'm gonna take a motion, I think we probably have discussion, though.
Well, I'll make a motion for discussion purposes, motion to approve.
Motion is second, discussion, um, and clearly a hundred thousand dollars is a little Band-Aid on roads, and we just took out a bond a couple years ago, for two million, and we've got two payments left on that, um, I don't, unless you're gonna put aside half a million dollars a year.
We got two, we got two payments or two years?
Two, two years.
Annual, annuals.
Yes, that's what I thought.
So unless you're gonna put aside half a million dollars a year, every year, and that just barely keeps up, so I think we're probably looking at a road bond again, just definitely not before the last one gets figured out.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, I think the, the game plan was to build until we got that paid for, but I'm just looking right, right now, that I think there's an awful lot of them that need attention, you know?
Agreed.
I, you know, I haven't just, let me, probably it's a discussion we should have with Jim, but, I mean, 'cause I don't know how they cost to build a road, I'm not gonna, but just a hundred thousand seems pretty light, my, but...
And this would be not just for Rabbit Valley, correct?
No, that's correct, this is a, this is a hundred thousand dollars for him to tap into to do road repairs.
I don't see our, whether, going back normal anytime soon, I, you can eat a hundred grand pretty easy, so. Any other discussion?
I'll make a motion, can I make a motion now?
I'm just gonna alter your first motion, you already have the motion on the second for the hundred thousand. All those in favor?
I'm doing the unfounded?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I made a motion, I guess I gotta go. I don't, really, I don't, I don't, I think that's a real number.
Polls, yeah. So, two, two, doesn't pass?
I'll make a motion to put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in road repair.
Motion?
I'll second.
Second. Discussion?
It's a more realistic number, but I'm not sure that everybody's gonna be happy with that.
None of anybody's gonna be happy with any total. All in favor? To vote? I feel that we should give you an opportunity, if you wanna leave it at that, not that, I don't wanna subvert you, and make you go first.
I don't mind you being the bad guy. Anybody wanna change it?
Yeah, I like yours.
I mean, I, on principle, don't disagree with you, and I, I don't oppose your number, but...
You guys are gonna look good when you're like this.
I re- I really prefer that you be the spend, the spending one.
Sometimes it is better to go first.
We're trying.
So there's no more, no further business, right?
That concludes, I think, your business for the, uh, budget.
So, do I need a motion to, to adjourn the budget, or just leave? I think you're good, 'cause we're still gonna stay and work, so. I know you're a handful.
You stick around for select meeting if you want.
Oh, yeah.
Do you wanna do a motion to end your budget meeting, and then, then move along?
I second.
All in favor?
Just leave.
I'll phone call away, you know, if, if you need backup.
I should show up at Tommy, though.
I will, I will.
Thanks to the select board, town manager, crisis, very smooth, and, and really, really good together.
Yes, thank you very much.
Would it be okay if I just, we took two minutes, however, but-
Got any water?
Do you have any water, Steve?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe, maybe, you know, the new police, you can have the new tasers for like Tommy, Tommy.
Are you volunteering for, uh, Zedman?
I'll be, I'll be taking the floor.
With the new one?
I'll be right back to serve in that camera stand.
Everybody knows I'm not writing, I'm like, so. Have a good night.
See ya.
Thank you.
That's all?
Yeah. You want to?
No, I want to.
I might want to.
Yeah. You want to?
Nah, I'll be good with that. And you put one down in the hurry.
Oh, yeah, I'll wait.
It went from like, comfortable in here to...
Put the, put the air on.
That costs money.
Yeah. Thank you.
If it's anything like the daily, you have the heat on, and the air, you know, and that's about, hopefully, that's gonna be resolved, if we're spending enough money on that.
What, what?
I actually thought we would talk about fixing that, that.
We did, we did, that's gonna be, hey, what, what did we only spend in the land, hell?
What did we spend, oh, I have more in my paper, I got shit. I think that was one of the most expensive rooms.
I mean, that's gonna be-
It's a win, it picks it again.
Right, I, I can- Right, I mean, I think that's the fix, is to do something like that there.
Just do it right. There's too many of them, I mean, there's a lot of them.
I mean, you, we can have the guys go out and fill the sides with gravel, and the next big storm, it's all washed away, so.
But how effective is it, too? I mean, they can only do so much work.
All your own. To do that, it's.
Yeah.
It needs to go, and you need some bigger culverts, so.
We have, I think all of our, whatever size gravel today, they just need to double, because.
Some of them need their annuals changed.
Are you guys all set to go?
I'm sure we can do that. It'd be awesome, though, I, five years already, so. Yeah, let's catch up to where we are.
So you need to action on the minutes?
Action on the minutes.
Motion to accept.
Motion in the second, in discussion. All those in favor? It's a vote. Adjustments to the agenda.
There are nothing, sir.
Public comment.
I, I just couldn't think of anything else you could spend money on.
Still early, still early. We did six one, we did six two, six three abatement, Helen Morris, count five thirty-three.
Recommends denial.
So move.
Stop me, the motion, right? I'll second the motion for discussion whenever anybody's ready, if there is any.
What's on there for building there?
On Mrs. Morris's property?
On the Morris?
Yeah, they're vacant lots.
The island doesn't have any buildings on it at all?
She's not the island.
Well, you was calling it Kobe Town.
Yeah, that's David Morris. Are we doing Helen Morris or David Morris?
Helen Morris.
Helen.
Helen.
Oh, maybe that's why I'm wrong, huh?
David Morris is the next one.
Yeah, there's two separate ownership in there, I was confused, too.
So Helen Morris is just land, yes.
This is on the list of the pool?
Sorry, one from last week, sir?
Yeah.
Yep, that one will be on next Thursday. Some follow-up information that'll be, that's available and, so.
Needs to be shorter, don't they? So just a question, I guess. And maybe it's in here, so, too, but for me, I would like to see lot size, value now, value then, and why you're denying.
Second, please, Jim. Just gonna show you the lot size, the prior evaluation, and then comparable properties. First, first columns, the property question.
You know what I'm thinking is, I think that when those are double-sided, it's, it's confusing. I think we need to do them single-sided.
I actually don't like double-sided.
I hate double-sided. Would that be helpful if I start doing these single-sided?
Maybe everybody else is okay with that.
No, I agree with you.
Depends, I mean, there's a lot in here that.
Do you want my copy? It's single-sided.
Does that have everything you were looking for?
Second, that's over.
No, I was just waiting for acknowledgement. It's already been, motion in the second. Any discussion? If you need further time to review, take your hand. If there's any need to further discuss, so all those in favor of the denial? To vote? Six point four abatement for David Morris, assessing agent recommends denial. Pretty much all the same info as before, for the prior case, for the most part.
I like did an analysis of everything that people deny when it's not.
That's right, this one's an island.
Yeah, does that, that one has, oh, it has buildings on it?
It has a campus. I don't, I don't have a way to get out there unless you see another boat ride in the future.
Oh, trip. Oh, yeah, tonight, one of them, and they had no problem.
So what's the size of the lot?
Um, he thought that it was less than half an acre. Um, I, I used a couple of sources, and I actually mapped it out, since I could with the GIS tools. And it was, so the lot officially is like point seven four acres or point seven five somewhere in there. And it, when I mapped it using a GIS, which is not accurate enough for a survey, but it was like point seven three, point seven four. So it was actually very close. I told him if he needed to, to, if he thought that an adjustment in the acreage would be done, that he would have to actually take this survey.
So is there a, an adjustment here because it's on an island?
It's already was documented by the KRT, and everything else. He, well, it was different for you, but I did do a matrix of island values for the town of Oxford, that's in there, that analysis.
Is that this?
Mr. Morris wasn't happy, but he appreciated the due diligence, as he said.
So this is the Colby Island one, where it's point seventy-five acres, and its value is a hundred and seventy-eight and nine, correct?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, sorry, I'll make a motion on the denial.
I'll second it.
Motion in the second, discussion. Need further time to, all those in favor, the motion. Deny, or oppose. Three to one. Sharon opposed. Six point five abatement for Mariana John Maven, count one twenty-one.
Yeah, recommends approval, thirty-four eighty-two.
Oh, yeah, I see. Sorry. I know it looked different, so I'm just looking.
Motion's got.
Motion. All right, Mr. Hunter?
Seconded for discussion.
Second, discussion. All those in favor? To vote? Six point six abatement for Andrew and Catherine Thompson, account four one zero, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. To approve. Motion by Mr. Hunter?
Baggered.
Seconded by Sharon Jackson. Land knows. Discussion, all in favor? Vote? Six point seven abatement for Ernest and Jessica Fitz, account fifteen, in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. Assessing agent recommends approval.
Motion?
Baggered.
Motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor? To vote? Six point eight abatement for Charles and Emily Williams, account thirty-one sixty-nine, in the amount of two hundred and six dollars and eighty cents.
Baggered.
Discussion, all in favor? To vote? Supplemental, is it a supplemental abatement for Alberta Dampier? Count one one seven nine, in the amount of two hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-six cents. Vote, assessing agent recommends approval.
Baggered.
Moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor? To vote? Supplemental for Jason Vitale Senior, count one one nine two, in the amount of fifty-seven dollars and twenty cents.
Baggered.
Motion in the second, any discussion? All those in favor? To vote? Supplemental for Don McGlynn, account three zero zero two, in the amount of six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. Assessing agent recommends approval. Motion by Mr. Hunter? I'll, I'll second.
Cool.
Okay. All those in favor? Vote? That's it for the abatements. Uh, town manager report.
I assume it's brief. I assumed you all appeared to be talking up tonight, so I was.
I hope you got a good one. I waited for this, and you got over the wall.
The shot one, rather the shot.
You wanna discuss, you wanna discuss his evaluation?
Sure, yeah, we can, let's do that, that's a good plan. Hopefully the room will be done for the next meeting, I'll keep you posted.
Call like midnight is. Nothing, nothing, nothing. Cy Morris. Make sure you follow the right spot. Abatement, they come looking, you know, like normal time, they might expect you got in a storm. You ain't got a storm, you're something else, go.
These are all of your abatements and supplementals here as well?
Let's start over there. That work, baby. He goes, geez, I don't see a signature tab here.
Should be right on the top, isn't it?
Doesn't mean it doesn't get a tab, come on, man. This one's got a tab, it's right on the top. All right.
That's what happens.
Throwing me off.
Wendy's not here one night, right?
Yeah, so. See, I'm not even gonna ask if you're blaming Wendy or blaming the replacement.
I hope.
I never touched the.
They always have tabs, and Wendy doesn't. Apparently.
Pick a big shoulder.
I think it started at five.
Why do you start at five? I would be very supportive of selecting these meetings at three in the afternoon, if anybody goes.
That one doesn't have a tab.
This one doesn't have a tab. Here's a test.
I'm not, I'm not, I think I have the. Doesn't have a tab, is that a copy, or is that?
Why don't we, um, yeah, let's double check. Why don't we, um, yeah, let's double check. All right, so this one, uh, has the one and this, uh, the chair and Mr. Hunter both
You've got some papers put together on this one and another paper.
Does this?
Wasn't.
No, not.
Okay.
So this is separate, I mean, you can pick it separate.
What, well, you can say.
We can add the ballots for everyone, electronics.
You can add that.
So, um, can I ask a question?
You guys can leave it, yes, of course.
Um, so Floyd, I was just talking, I'm going to bring him in.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, yeah, use my name, go ahead.
So, um, is there any reason why you couldn't, we couldn't have a separate selectmen's meeting and a separate assessors meeting? So that you can do the assessors' work separately?
I just think that when you put two of them together, like tonight is, it takes a little bit of confusion. We just need to do the budget tomorrow, no?
So, you, of course, you guys can do it that way if you want to. Traditionally, since I've been here, you folks haven't, you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think pages that weren't tabbed. David Morris is the one you were opposed to.
Typically, you folks have not wanted to do separate ones, but we have so many abatements because of the revow. But if you'd like to start doing them separately, I will do that.
Well, no, it's just that then if you got everybody right on, or anything, you know, maybe even try to talk them into voting, or if they're right, we take it up and, while everybody's got it in mind.
You mean for the budget?
Yeah.
I would love to see that happen. I don't know why we have to table everything, uh.
No.
Traditionally, that's what they did and nobody likes to change.
Well, it used to be too.
They didn't always do it that way.
No. I, I don't know if it's, I'm thinking here or in the town, but usually the budget committee votes a separate night than the select board. Is it, is that how you did that here originally?
That's how, we didn't, used to meet together. When I was on the budget committee, we didn't meet together. It started.
No, we, we, we go, they wanted to split, yeah, we were, it was their meeting and we proved it afterwards, but it's just that when you're doing it, just putting it all on the card or whatever and then coming back and redoing it, I don't know. Seems like when you hack it out, that's new time to do it.
I, I would certainly prefer that they vote on the same night that they review the budget, it would make the most sense.
Yeah.
But, um.
You could have cut one meeting right out.
I think that we probably could have saved a lot of time. But, at the same time, we started, um, we started this whole process of doing them jointly when, when I started here. And it seemed up until this year, it seemed like a pretty smooth process.
I like doing it jointly because everybody hears the same explanation. So I think that's a good idea to do that. Uh, but like, we had a select meeting, a budget committee meeting, and we had several assessor, uh, items because of all of the abatements. So it just makes it a whole lot.
Mm-hmm. Well, in, in the future, Sharon, after tonight, there won't be budget items, so I mean, it will be shorter.
Right.
So maybe that's, maybe that's the consideration for next cycle.
I mean, that's.
Yeah, to make sure that on the nights we're doing budget, there's no other business items to contend with. Unless they like emergency or something. If that's.
I'd always start this one over again.
I think there's pros and cons of doing it together. You don't, I don't think we get the independent votes, budget committee, selectmen, when we do everything together, start to finish. But, it does save a lot of time. Saves a lot of time for you, it saves a lot of time for the department heads, rather than having two meetings. Um, I don't know what the fix is. It's what everybody, the majority prefers to do. I don't think we'd get a good representation of independent voting when we do it together like that, when we vote.
I agree with that. I really do.
You're not, you're not, sitting here listening, you're not, because there's just such a difference between what you're talking about. But if you separate, you'll get, they'll get theirs together and you'll get yours together. And then the reality is, we've always presented it to the town, both positions, and they voted on the same position.
So let's, let's, let's think about maybe rather than, and we do park it, continue to park it as we go, but we need, together, we have the presentations and then at the end, there's, the budget committee's going to vote one night, selectmen only can vote another night. Presentations are all done, together.
All, all together. Yep.
Just a suggestion, we can think about it, we got a year.
And I think the problem too is combining the selectmen's meeting with the budget committee meeting.
Well, it's, it's something we need to work on. I mean, we have a chair of that group and we have a chair of this group, but we're meeting together, so you really don't, you probably shouldn't have two chairs. Um, but, you have what you have, unless we, together, you know, the, the five of us and the six or seven of them, all vote, we're going to have one chair for this meeting. And if it's a budget committee member, it's a budget committee member.
Maybe I'm not.
Select board member, it's a select board member.
That's not how I want to explain it. A joint budget committee meeting, that is just a budget committee meeting, do not include the selectmen's meeting in with that budget committee meeting.
I understand what you're saying.
You, you know what I was saying.
But it's still additional meetings. If we have business we have to conduct, so we're going to have to have selectmen's meetings, unless we do it on a different night. I mean, we've tried to do budget stuff first and then we move in. There was a reason we did the two, tried to do the two items first. Um, and I think everybody understood that, minus one person, so.
Well, it's some sort of degree of difficulty, a little bit, I believe.
Well, I, I don't need, I'm not going to speak for Henry.
And I don't want to be, and I'm not trying to speak ill of anybody, but the agendas are drafted for these meetings, it's a selectmen's meeting, this is a selectmen's meeting, and one of the agenda items is the, the workshop with the budget committee. So, um, the reason that it's drafted that way is so that it remains a selectmen's meeting, so that ultimately the chairman of the select board is the one running the meeting. That's my thought process.
So previously, when I served on the budget committee and I was chair, we had our budget committee meeting, the select board was there behind us, and they weren't, um, they weren't just.
You just listened.
That's all, unless the chairman of the budget committee asked, of the budget committee, asked somebody from the select board to speak, um, then the budget committee went ahead and did their voting, and the select board was there to hear the presentations, but they voted separately later without the budget committee there. That's how we did it for the entire time. When I served on the budget committee and I turned out.
I think we can improve it. I, I think, we, we need to look at our, our rules and what we're going to do. I like the idea of meeting together, going through with all the department heads, having the budget present, presented to us, and then having two separate nights to vote. That means, when we meet together, we're going to do, we're either going to do budget committee or we're going to do select. If it's a joint meeting, it's a joint meeting, and I, I, I think, the more I think about it, I think we should, all the members that are here, board members on both sides, we vote in a chair of that joint meeting, and that's who runs the meeting.
So let me add this to it. When we have a joint budget and select board meeting, I think it's the town manager that should, I think we should consider that, having the town manager moderate the budget committee and select board meeting. So, I'm just going to add this, because I've been a manager in three of the towns, currently right now I am. So, where I am, we have a joint budget committee meeting and a select board meeting, and it is not the same night as the selectmen's meeting. We all sit in a circle like this, and all of the department heads are there and they present, and, um, both the budget committee and the selectmen have an opportunity to ask any questions they want. So it's like we're one committee. But we do, it's not in the middle of a selectmen's meeting, it's not at the end of it, it's, that's the only thing we're doing that night. And then, each can have their own vote. But I think, and I did it ten years, that's how I did it in Pryburg too, but one thing they did, they didn't want to do in Pryburg, is they didn't want to vote at the same night. And it ended up being a very cordial meeting, but the, um, if, if the chair is, and actually is the, the, um, the manager, I think that's another option to look at too. And then, one of the committees don't feel like they're the one in charge, and it's their meeting, not a party.
I'm, I'm good, I'm good with that, it's just, there needs to be one person in charge. There needs to be one person to say, it's your turn to speak, it's your turn to speak.
Yep, I agree.
Whether it's the town manager, I don't know if you want to put that on the town manager, but.
Prior to, prior to here, what you're, what Sharon's describing is exactly how I've done it in prior towns.
I'm good with that too.
Usually, in the beginning of the meeting, the budget committee and the select board would, I don't want to say, they would make a motion to turn the meeting over to the town manager. The town manager would run over everything, and when the town manager was done with business, he would ask for a motion to adjourn and it would be over. Um, one of the reasons that we started doing the meetings on Thursday nights is in the, my first cycle through, there was, when I first started, was too many nights of meetings, so we tried to combine it together. And I think the two takeaways I'm kind of feeling, I guess, the member that brought it up isn't here this evening, um, the takeaway that I'm kind of feeling like is maybe what if we looked at doing joint budget selectmen's meetings for budget items only, maybe, maybe it's on Tuesday nights or something like that? And then we continue with our selectmen's business on the first and third Thursdays, but they stay on separate nights. When we get to the end of the budget, the budget committee has their final meeting, they vote on their own, you guys, your selectmen's meeting that follows that last budget meeting, you guys vote, and then we're all done. That would be a simple way to do it, I would think.
Yep.
But I do like, I do like the joint meetings, because I do feel, from my perspective, I feel like there's really good discussion that happens in this room. And I feel like they get to hear what you guys think and vice versa, and I don't have to have the department heads here two, three, four times.
Yep.
Just five.
You need to get more people on this budget meeting too.
We had a bigger number once upon a time, we couldn't fill the seats.
I know.
And we can't fill the seats now with a smaller number.
I'm just telling you that if you're not getting, you don't, okay, but the taxpayers aren't getting the representation from the budget committee that they should be getting.
I would agree, and I would agree that the town doesn't get the representation, representation from the taxpayers at town meeting either.
Nope.
So, it, it's hard to, we can't get people to turn up for that, we can't get seven people to commit to the budget committee and stay here. I mean, it's hard, I get it.
At some point, it's the same. That would require a people though, and a change of government if you did that. That would require a total change in the government that would have to be voted on by the legislative body. But then you have to look at the pros and cons of a council versus selectmen, because the council, if you have a town council, they vote on everything, and then the citizens have no say. There's no town meeting where the budget is voted on by the town, because the town council.
Is your governing body.
That's your governing body, and they vote on the budget, not the people. So you're taking that away from the people.
They're going to use it here.
Right, they don't know anyone.
Colleen.
The way we, um, were able to get more people interested in the process and to get more people to vote was instead of doing a Saturday town meeting, which is what my other town had done, is we went to a paper ballot, and we saw tremendous, um, from the community.
Hey, now, speaking of that, now, didn't we vote that that might be something that we brought up at town meeting this year? How did that ever?
We did, we, we said.
It was going to be in the town, in the warrant, correct?
But it would be at the town meeting whether they decided to continue town meetings or go to a ballot.
So that is going to be in it this year.
Yes, you wanted a warrant article that would poll the, poll the body on whether or not they wanted that for the following town meeting.
I'd almost forgotten it.
Nope.
And we all know how that's going to go.
How it's going to go.
Because the people that turn up to town meeting want to go to town meeting. And then, who is it going to vote on? And that's how it should be.
Well, not necessarily, it would.
I thought we were going to put it on the ballot.
We're putting it on the warrant.
Oh, on the warrant to be voted on.
I thought you were going to put it on the ballot.
I can check my notes, but I'm pretty clear that my instructions were to put it on the town meeting warrant for open floor.
We're putting it on the town meeting warrant to decide whether we're going to put it on the ballot in future years.
I think we would have put it on the ballot.
I think the town manager can look it up and.
I'll go back and look at my notes.
And you'll be apologizing to mom.
There's no need to apologize when you're wrong. You're just wrong.
You guys might want to adjourn before you leave.
What about the, uh, did you vote on the?
Motion to approve.
Not the TV.
Eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven.
Roll with us.
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor? Vote.
Vote to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?